You've got cash, I feel like. We've got the mother cash. I don't know if you can... I don't know. 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 But I got your message. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's fine. Uh, real quick. Uh, it's getting better. I get the results in my hands. Okay. What we did is we have the regs, the disposition form. We can use that for certain things. If you're managing to wait, then we just go with this ready schedule. It's actually even saying that. There isn't no good way to justify that because we wanted to...
Well, welcome, everybody. We are quickly going to do a roll call for our municipal housing agency governing board, and we've got a couple of quick items that we need to take care of on that agenda. And so I will call that meeting to order and ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman? Moore?
Here.
Grease? Here. Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have four.
All right, item two on the agenda. The municipal housing agency governing board is the authorization for the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for Danny L. Anderson in 432 East Leach Avenue pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program, Board Communication Number 13-382. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion to authorize the city manager to release that mortgage and related instruments?
Oh, I thought you...
Been moved?
Let me just tell him what he has to do.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the conveyance of 1104 East Phillips Street, city-owned municipal housing agency property pursuant to the Affordable Home Ownership Program, Board Communication Number 13-381. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Again, this is 1104 East Phillips Street. Seeing none, could we have a motion for item three?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Our last item is a motion to adjourn.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourn. All right. Prior to our starting of our city council meeting, which we apologize to everybody, is starting a little late this evening, we're going to have a quick message from our own city council member, Skip Moore, and we'll ask everybody who would like to, to stand at this time for his message.
Oh, you can remain seated, please.
Says we can all remain seated.
Last Saturday, I attended the Mothers Against Violence Rally at Simon Estes. First of all, I'd like to say thank goodness for mothers. Finally, some mothers stood up to the violence that's happening in the city, and they said no more, not to my children. And now we're seeing the fathers come out, and I hope the final statement's going to be everybody against violence. But I started thinking about the violence in our own city, in our state, our country, and the world. And, you know, how do you resolve this? How do you stop it? And I started thinking about a speech that Martin Luther King gave when he was accepting the Nobel Peace Prize on December 11th of 1964. And this is it. Nonviolence is the answer to the crucial political and moral questions of our time, the need for man to overcome oppression and violence without resorting to oppression and violence. Man must evolve for all human conflict, a method which rejects revenge, aggression, and retaliation. The foundation of such a method is love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. I would also ask that everybody give us a moment of silence for the, in the passing of our associate Steve Gunson, who passed away this last, a week ago actually, Sunday morning. And also, a moment of thoughtful prayer and thoughts to pass on to Lieutenant Joe Gonzalez, who is recovering from a serious injury. So if you would give us a moment of silence for those two. Thank you. All right, I will ask, want to welcome everybody to our July 29th Des Moines City Council meeting, and I will ask the clerk at this time to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I know that we have one item that...
I'll move.
It's been moved, but we do, are we scratching one item?
It should have been...
Okay.
It's not on there.
All right, so we're moving the agenda as presented. Item three is the approving the consent agenda, items three through 37. These are items that we will take as one item and one vote unless either a city council person or a member from the audience would pull for further clarification or discussion this evening. Item nine, Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak. Item 11...
I'm going to withdraw that, item 11, Mayor.
Okay. Item 11 is withdrawn. Item 14, Councilmember Mahaffey registers a conflict. Item 33C, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. And item 33D, Councilmember Hensley votes no. Are there any other items?
I have a short comment on 25.
All right, item 25.
Do you see anything?
Coleman. Anybody have anything else? That, so we're going to speak on nine, 33, and 25. Anybody have anything else? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance, please?
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items pass. We are going to move straight to the hearing items. It has passed 5:00. And that will take us into the hearings, which begins with item 42. And we'll note that the hearings start at 5:12. Item 40, Tuesday, on the assessment of a $500 penalty to the following alcoholic beverage license holders for violation of the Iowa Alcoholic Beverage Laws, sales to minors. A is the Oasis Grocery and Liquor at 2917 Payne Road. B is Des Moines Valero Number 202 at 821 East Euclid Avenue. Item C under that is Lot 33 Cafe Bar and Lounge at 3701 Ingersoll Avenue. Item D is Des Moines Valero Number 204 at 3733 Easton Avenue. And E is the Fast Trip at 1516 Southeast First Street. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on any of these items, 42A through E?
I'll move it.
All right, it's been moved.
And hope they stop selling liquor to our kids.
Mr. Coleman, if I could add a friendly amendment to that, I would like to see when they come up for renewal, if, anytime there's been an assessment of a fine or a suspension or anything like that, if there could just be an asterisk or something next to it. So we, I mean, it's hard to just keep track of all these when they come up for renewal, just so we can see that when they come up for renewal in the future.
Great idea.
There, there's one that's in the appeal process right now.
All right. Mr. Moore, Ms. Grease.
Seven yes?
All right, item 43, this ought to get a double asterisk, on the assessment of a $1,500 penalty and a 30-day suspension of a Class C beer license for Quick Star at 2701 Ingersoll Avenue for the violation of an Iowa alcoholic beverage laws, sales to the minor. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
It's like three violations, isn't it?
Yeah, and I have a question on that. So they have three violations, is during a 12-month period, if they have more than three, that they automatically lose the license, correct?
If, if there's more than three.
And it rolling 12-month period, or is it from...
I believe it's calendar, but I'll, I'll double check that for you real quick.
That's fine. If somebody could just get us the information, Jeff. I'll move item 43.
Anybody to speak to this? It's been moved.
Seven yes?
Item 44, similar assessment of a $1,500 fine and penalty and a 30-day suspension of a Class E liquor license for the University Groceries at 2121 University Avenue for violation of the Iowa Alcoholic Beverage Laws, sales to the minor. Anybody to speak to this item?
I'll move it.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Seven yes?
Yes.
Back on item 43.
Forty-three.
It's, it's four, four or more in a three-year period.
In a three-year?
Three-year period. Yeah. So not one year, three years.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Okay, takes us to item 45. An application from the Transport Companions LLC for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service, Council Communication Number 13-403. Is there somebody in the audience to speak to this item? This is Transport Companions LLC for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service.
I'll move 45.
Item 46, unamended and restated billboard leases with Clear Channel Outdoor Inc. on city-owned property on the following locations is Council Communication Number 13-400. A is west of I-235 freeway between Ovid and Hull Avenue, and B is 22763rd Street. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to these two items, 46A and B? Is there anybody else, or just these two speakers? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Jason Palmerkey. I'm with Clear Channel Outdoor. I'm at 4131 109th Street in Urbando. Clear Channel and the city staff have been working on this agreement now for probably two years.
Three.
Three. Going on three. There's been a lot of, lot of thought. It's gone into the negotiations, a lot of thoughts have gone into the lease terms on this. You know, it's a win-win situation for both the city and for Clear Channel. The city, they're getting the property at 849 Arius Road. It's a great corner property, great location. You know, they're getting this property after even a $40,000 makeover that we're going to be doing on the property prior to the city receiving it. With that, we are removing the hydraulic lift tanks that are on the property, capping the monitoring wells, removing all the concrete, concrete parking lot that is basically covering the whole property, going to backfill that property with topsoil, seeding it. And also along with that, we are doing a Phase II environmental study to make sure that's a safe property for you guys. In return, as you know, Clear Channel, we'll be receiving two 20-year lease renewals at the properties on Hull and on 63rd Street, at the established locations that we have. So that is it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street, here tonight, representing the Coalition of Southside Neighborhood Associations. I'm the chair of that organization. We've been working with Councilmember Meyer for three years to try and make something happen at this corner. Didn't know that this would be the way it was resolved in the end, but I think it's a fair deal. As, as they pointed out, we've been trying to tie this property to the piece to the north of it, if possible, to make the corner a desirable place for future development. I know I have friends here this evening to speak to another council agenda item about billboards, and probably going to have to renew some friendships after speaking in favor of this here, but I think this is a, a small price to pay for the city. It's, it's no cash outlay for us. I think it's a fair trade for us to get control of this piece of property for some key development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, could we have a motion? Item 46A and B.
I'd like to speak to this first, Mayor.
Yep.
You know what I'm going to talk about, this tree out on 63rd Street. Jason, you might want to come back up. Considering, you know, I'm, I'm going to vote with you, Brian. I think that this being an ash tree, its demise is on the way anyway.
Yeah.
But if it had been an oak or anything else, I went out and looked at it, and to receive two trees for a 16-inch tree, and it's established, it's very healthy, I think it's time, Rick, that we need to revisit this mitigation schedule because they're going to mitigate with two trees, and we're going to plant them somewhere else, and if they both die, then we got to buy two more trees and get them established. The question I've got for you, Jason, as you know, when I was municipal arbiter, we had an issue with clear sight zone out there on Hull Avenue. It was not in your contract to have that clear zone, but we worked it through. Has it been put back into this contract this time?
Don't believe so. You're talking the, what we worked on about thinking...
Yeah, where you, we were permitted to remove some trees on the north side of that, and you replaced Mont Hull, but what I'm afraid of is that if we, I think, I don't know how we do this, but I think it should be in there. Otherwise, you don't know what's going to happen in the future, and I'd hate to see more trees be planted and eventually grow up and we're back at the same situation again. And I'm, I'm doing that for your favor.
Sure, I appreciate that.
I don't know where we go with it, but I think that's a real concern.
I, if I could just make one statement again, I'd like to appreciate everybody at the council table. I know it's a difficult issue for everybody. Also, the Southwest 9th Corridor Study Group is here. Clear Channel, thank them, Rita Connor and Matt Anderson in Economic Development for their help on this. It's a huge priority, and we had a discussion this morning on Southwest 9th and how we can improve that corridor. This is a great beginning. We're going to open it up, and we're going to go for developers to try and get something done there, and this is a very good first step in doing that. So I will move 46A and B.
Can I, and I'm supportive of the motion, but I just want to make a statement for Clear Channel's benefit. Clear Channel has been very supportive, and I want everybody to know, we've got the issue with the bridge on Grand Avenue, and I've been working with Tim Jamison so that we can provide notice because those businesses obviously are impacted significantly by that, and Clear Channel is working with us to draw attention to those businesses there. And I just want people to understand what Clear Channel is willing to give in exchange for that as well, so.
Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm going to support this, but I still think it would be the only right thing to do. I don't know how we do it, but we need that clear sight zone in front of that billboard on Hull Avenue, just to ensure that in the future, we don't end up removing healthy trees again and mitigating them. It's...
Well, can I make a suggestion that we go ahead and vote on this? Because I believe that it's, maybe we have a follow-up motion, because I, it's not only on Hull Avenue, but I know that I've been approached by Clear Channel on some other billboards that have tree-related issues, so maybe we need to look at it as a whole as opposed to just one billboard.
And I, I'll, I don't want to do it in this motion, but I think if we do a different motion, because this is a contractual agreement that we can't really deviate from, but I'll support your different motion that you're going to make, Christine Maybien.
Okay.
Seven yes?
So did you want to make us another motion then, as a follow-up?
Do you want to do that? And refer to the manager and everybody else to try to pull, put something together that would help mitigate this issue?
I'd like to move that issue back to the manager for a report back to us between you and legal, and we're to move on it.
And that we look at it as a whole and not just on one side?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, item 47 is on the 2013 Expanded Street Reservicing Program, Contract Two, the resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corp. Kurt Rasmussen, President, $1,465,616.55. Council Communication Number 13-398. A under that is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
If not, I'll move 47 and 47A.
Item 48 is on the 2013 Designated Neighborhood Sidewalk Replacement Program, Resolution Improving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate and Receive and File Bids, Council Communication Number 13-399. These are two neighborhoods that really need and deserve a lot of sidewalk work, including, Brian, down in your ward again. So anybody to speak to this?
I'll move 48. Are you trying to say something, Mayor, about my...
Yeah, well, I'm just, you know, until we have to put a zoo in every other ward, we have to, you know, make sure that you...
I don't have libraries, so...
Yeah, all right, I got it.
We, we heard about libraries after you left this morning.
Seven yes?
Yeah. All right, that completes the, the hearings at 5:27. Takes us back to item number nine, which Councilmember Hensley has asked to speak. Item nine is approving the change order number one with S.A.K. Construction LLC for additional work on the 2011 Critical Sanitary Sewer Lining, not to exceed $91,290. Council Communication Number 13-394.
Skip, you may want to speak on this as well because it's the Glendale Pond. And I know that we've had a lot of questions on this, and that's why I wanted to bring it up, so we had a, an opportunity to visit about it at the council table. I've had a number of calls on this last week. Hallie, I'm sure you probably did, Skip obviously did. And there were obviously some issues there. They'd filled it, and then they had to go back. There were some additional issues, and that's what we're approving here tonight for this actual item. I'm assured by all of the appropriate individuals, Ben Page, Parks and Rec, that it will fill up the, as soon as we have a one-inch rain or more. And I saw driving by just, again, yesterday afternoon that it was starting to, to fill up with just a, a little bit. But it seems like this is a very common sense approach to do it rather than spending the money, and, and having gone the other direction previously, it didn't seem to be cost beneficial, or there are also some environmental issues. So I just wanted individuals to know that it may take a little bit of time, rain permitting. Hopefully later this week, it should be filled by the end of the week, so.
Skip?
I'll wait for the additional rain.
Okay.
I'll move.
Six yes?
Okay, that takes us to item 25, which is the First Amendment to the Real Estate Purchase Installment Contract, sale of land for private development with the Des Moines Social Club for Development on the Old Fire Station Number One, 900 Mulberry Street, to clarify requirements for the use of space in the buildings, Council Communication Number 13-390. Mr. Coleman?
Just a, a quick comment and a question. The question first, as we go through this development process, Mr. Manager, does the social club have any responsibility to communicate with us? Any, I'm just not sure how this came up. Was it in the normal course? Did they send us a letter? There was no letter or communication from them attached. I'm just wondering what our communication lines are and how that's working in this interim period where they haven't fully paid for the property. Mr. Coleman, I'm going to ask Matt Anderson, and I know I see Jake Christiansen here as well, so I think between the two, they can give you a good answer.
Mayor, county, members of the city council, Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. Yeah, this came up in normal, normal course of staff working with, with the developer. We do this with every project. As it's going through the permitting process, we're watching it, the economic development staff is, as, if we have development agreements. All of our development agreements do have, have clause, has a, have paragraphs in them that we can demand reports if we, if we want to on, on projects. We don't want to get overwhelmed at the staff level with, you know, monthly progress reports, and we don't want to burden developers, but we can ask those projects if we, if we deem fit. But this just came across in the normal course of doing business.
The, the, the point I want to make, and I'll just make it to both of you, we, we originally passed a, a plan that had...
you, we, we originally passed a, an, a, a plan that had about 40% more taxable square feet in it than what's recommended tonight. Um, 8,000 to 11,000, is that right?
Jake's going to be able to answer that question probably better than I can. It's not an actual reduction in the amount of, of taxable square feet. What it is, it's a, it's a reallocation of where that taxable square feet is. We had, we had originally had it in the, in the main building.
Okay.
There's a reuse of the basement and the annex building that was, or the, the maintenance building to the north, to the south, excuse me, that we had not anticipated. And so that is, that's the change. Jake, can I correct me if I stated anything wrong?
Sure. I think the easy way to look at it is we've actually had an increase in actual rentable area to the project. So, in the, all of the iterations that have been in front of the council prior to this, we anticipated leasing the entire first floor primarily for, for profit, second floor primarily for nonprofit, and then the back building was going to be essentially a single-story structure, which was the maintenance facility for the fire trucks. Through the process of the development, the social club has actually had numerous opportunities to expand the scope of, of the project. What you see in front of you is an example of that. We have a tenant who has, um, committed to lease the entire basement square footage as well as, uh, roof patio. So, that is why it caused a shift within the overall, um, makeup of the first floor. So now we have just a little bit of nonprofit on the first floor, that being the art gallery, uh, but we're actually increasing the taxable space to the city.
When, when do you anticipate that it, um, that construction will begin and, and...
Actually have begun. We started a couple of months ago. We've, um, completed lead abatement and asbestos abatement and have it clear on that. We've also, um, done all of the interior demolition required to facilitate this plan, inclusive of a, um, 7,500-pound steel beam that, that creates the black box theater in the maintenance facility. The, the building used to be bifurcated into two truck bays. It is now a wide-open space that, uh, will facilitate the performances.
So, you moved ahead in the back building. How about the, the big building?
We've been working on the, uh, front building as well. Um, actually, most of the asbestos and lead paint abatement occurred in the main building. Uh, we've, uh, taken out numerous dumpsters of, uh, material and if you walk the space right now, it is clean and ready for, uh, tenant improvements ahead.
I guess, is, that's kind of what I meant by the construction at the, when, when do you anticipate that starting?
Um, we're coming in with materials now. The new roof is going on the building, uh, today. Uh, that beam went in about a week and a half ago, so materials are, we've, we've tear it apart a little bit and now we're coming back with, with actual construction.
Completion date?
Still in December.
So, do you have leases then, um, at this point for the commercial space?
We are, uh, within probably a week of the primary tenant being signed. Extremely close, we've gone back and forth numerous times, but, uh, we've got, uh, strong commitment from, from the same group we've been talking to.
Okay.
And then, um, the other two leases on the first floor are only a few weeks behind. And the bar tenant in the back is, uh, probably within two or three weeks. They've been, um, on vacation, so it's been a bit difficult to get under.
I know this isn't your realm, but I, I am aware of some staffing changes.
Yes, and that is about all I know as well.
I think that's where that's coming from.
Sure, no, fair question. Um, I, I am not at, I don't know the details to get an answer there.
Okay.
All right, great, great update. Anybody have anything else?
I'll, I'll move it.
All right.
Seven, yes?
Item 33C, these are bids from the following. C is Cullenburg's PBS Landscaping, Matt Cullenburg, President, for Tree Planning Services, including site analysis at various city locations for the use by the Public Works Department, Forestry Division, $161,400. There were 11 bids mailed and two were received. Mr. Moore?
Last of this table, I'm, I'm really bothered by the fact that, uh, we are going to be privatizing the site and species selection for our trees that are going to be planted around the city and the parkings. And this is very critical. Where those trees are planted is where they should remain the rest of their life. Um, the other issue that I have over this is dispute revolu, or resolution, and I did talk with, uh, Pat Kozitsa and I believe that there, invariably, there will be residents coming out saying, "What are you doing?" And there'll be disputes. He's guaranteed me that the contractor will have a sheet that they can hand to the resident and ask them to call staff and have them come out to do the dispute resolution. I don't think a contractor should be doing that for us. Um, in light of the fact that the municipal arborist is really overwhelmed trying to come up with an urban forestry master plan for us, um, I will agree to vote for this, um, this time, but I think that once that urban forest master plan is done, uh, we need to bring this site and species selection back in-house as quickly as, as we possibly can. Chris?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Since you raised this question, um, Skip, I've been approached by, um, residents on Woodland and High Street where we have planted a large number of trees as a result of the sewer project that went on two years ago. Um, and unfortunately, there's not been any follow-up with watering and you're seeing a lot of the trees that are dying. Um, could, I'd like to know specifically whose responsibility is when they're, um, planted, and this was a replacement process as a result of the, um, capital improvements work, but it seems like it's, we might as well just be throwing money away or, or not doing it because if, if the residents are not willing to take care of them or feel it's their obligation, and when they've called down, I, I was told that they had contacted forestry and were advised that forestry was not going to take responsibility once they were planted. It just seems like it's a complete waste of...
Mrs. Hensley, we'd be happy to research that issue and the same one that Mr. Moore has raised. It, I, I think, I think the concept is that the street tree is the property owner's responsibility once it's planted. Uh, but clearly, when the tree is new, there's that period of vulnerability in the early stages, which I'm sure people know more about than I do. But I, I, I get your point and we can look at that again.
If we could just look at it and...
And make sure that we're doing it as best we can.
Rick, if I might, I think, um, Christine's absolutely right on this one. This was something totally different. Um, generally, we plant by request and the resident agrees to water that tree for a season or two, but these were replacement trees due to us and the sewer, sewer line. I think I've got a resolve to this. I think we should, should have a meeting about it as to how, I think, the, the trees that are dead now, they're dead, there's nothing we can do about them, but in the future, I think we've got a resolve to the situation of watering.
Can I also say, Skip, your point about species selection is something I want to talk over with Pat and his staff, uh, in terms of exactly how that works, because I'm not sure why that's so hard for us to do right now, so I'll, we'll pursue that a little bit. I get your point.
I'll move 33C.
Seven, yes?
All right, um, that takes us, uh, to the end of the consent agenda. We'll now move to item 38, which is Ordinance First Consideration, Amending Chapter 114 Municipal Code Regarding Two-Sided Parking Restrictions on Scott Street Between Southeast Second and Southeast Sixth Street, Council Communication, Number 13-401. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
Item's been moved. Discussion? Uh, we have communications and reports. I think, uh, real quickly, it looks like we have some Boy Scouts in the audience. Is that true?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's quickly recognize them. Would you guys all stand up? All right? What, what group are we from? Who's our speaker? There you go.
Um, we are from Ford, Des Moines. We are Troop Forty.
Troop Forty from Ford, Des Moines?
Yep.
Great, and you guys are down here. We're certainly happy to see you. Are you down here, uh, doing some community service or earning a badge or what are we?
Some of us are working on merit badges.
Fabulous. So, since you're speaking for the group, are you loving the city council meeting or not?
(laughing).
All right. All right, let's, let's all give them a great big hand. These are our young people that are going to be, uh, leading the rest of us, uh, here in, in a number of years, so we want you guys to get as much exposure to this, this, uh, great democratic system as you possibly can. So, thanks for coming down tonight. All right. Um, Communication Report is, uh, from the Representatives of Beaverdale and Lower Beaver, Meredith and Merle Hay Neighborhood Associations regarding the proliferation of large unsightly business signage, billboards, and digital display boards that line commercial quarters in Des Moines. Are there a number of people here to speak to this item? If so, we'd ask that you all, uh, take your places over here and we get an idea of how many folks are actually going to speak this evening. Got one, two, three? Four?
Four.
Any more?
Brian can't resist.
You setting this up, Brian? All right. Okay, uh, council, three minutes, five minutes?
Five.
All right. Ma'am, if you'd give us your name and address?
Tell me if you can't hear, because I haven't been able to hear anything out here tonight.
Really?
Yeah. Or else I need to wash my ears out or something. At any rate, um, I'm Joanne Hanover. I live at 1406 Merle Hay Road, and Jason made me go first. We, meaning the neighborhood, are very happy and appreciative for all the new buildings and new businesses in our neighborhood. Seven old buildings have been demolished and replaced with new buildings, and the eighth one is about to happen. According to the County Assessor's page, those seven buildings are valued over $11 million. I expect CVS to add a good amount to that amount, it'll certainly be over 12 million. Um, the Merle Hay Mall has added four new spaces in their last renovation, and, pardon me, the Flicks Brew House project will be another great addition to the neighborhood. Um, from the west, Merle Hay Road is the first street exit off of I-80. Thousands of cars pour off of the interstate and down, or up, Merle Hay Road every day, and thousands more local residents use it to get to 235, to Douglas Avenue, to Urban Dale Hickman, and all around Des Moines. In 2007, Merle Hay Road was approved by the, this council, well, maybe not all of you were here in 2007, uh, to be a designated gateway scenic, scenic corridor. I have some pictures tonight that I'd like to show you, uh, that do not look very scenic. Billboards, signs, overhead lines, transformers, and light poles look like clutter. This is not a new problem, but it is getting worse. So, get my pictures out.
Chris, do you want to help her?
Yep.
Okay. You'll see that there are two billboards almost exactly crossed from one another, and that is the way it is all along Merle Hay Road, because that's what the ordinance says. There's a certain footage there, and so, their channel of whoever else it is puts up a billboard on either side of the street. This one's kind of interesting. Looks like the car is actually up on top of the pillar there. Um, that's down closer to Madison Avenue. You can see the number of lines and transformers on this page, and even more on this one. There's another good one with all the lines going across the street. They're pretty thick out there. If you go down ML King, you won't find that. This one is facing Douglas, from Merle Hay Road. Will you take a good look at the number of signs there? I didn't count them, but they're huge.
What do you think of all those power poles?
We don't like them. Well, we have all these new buildings. I mean, everybody brings it up to us, you know, about all the good things that have happened in our neighborhood in the last five years, and then you drive out there and it's kind of a mess. This is a good one. Casey's, at their, at their own doing, uh, put up a monument sign instead of a big sign, but look what they have behind them. Another huge one. I think that the pictures can do a better job of showing you what's going on out there than me trying to tell you. My time's up. I'll let somebody else carry on.
Joanne, can you leave those pictures just up there so we can see them as the discussion goes on?
Well, for now, I don't have another set.
No, you, you don't, we don't have to receive them, but just so we can see them as the discussion goes on.
The rest of them are talking. You can keep, you can take them back.
As a reference point, thanks, Joanne.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Laura Peters and I live at 2110 55th Street, and, um, I'm here to speak more specifically about the new digital display boards that are popping up across town. Um, I didn't realize that Joanne was going to have such great visuals, and so mine's very crude by comparison, but, um, I live right here. I start off my house, I'm directly south of Hillis Elementary, and, um, last fall, October, November, I was standing at my kitchen sink and, um, did a double take as I was looking out my window, because I'm like, what are these flashing lights that I am seeing out my kitchen window? And, um, I thought I was going crazy and I realized that I was seeing the digital billboard that's sitting at the corner of Merle Hay and Hickman, which, you know, I have outlined here on the map. So even though I'm three blocks to the east and a block south of that billboard with it being placed at an angle the way that it is and the leaves coming down off the trees, I can see the flashing lights from that. So I can only imagine what the people that live north of there are facing, and certainly, you know, with, with these other billboards there unsightly, but particularly with these, with the bright new colors and we've seen the LED truck, advertisement truck that was driving down the street, they really are a distraction. So I'd just like to, you know, point out that we need special consideration, um, given with those two in the future, that they really infiltrate the neighborhoods more than what we, you know, probably realize, um, into the residential neighborhoods, so.
Thank you, Laura.
Mayor, councilmembers, Bill Gray, 4617 Franklin. Uh, we're here in support, uh, from the Beaverdale Neighborhood Association, supporting the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association in the sign ordinance. Um, Jason's kept, uh, kept us in touch with, uh, all the activities that they had going on, and, uh, we had a unanimous vote that, uh, we were going to support them along this. Uh, and, uh, as a little bit of background, you know, we've seen a lot of sign ordinances or sign, uh, appeals come through the Board of Adjustment, and it, it does get frustrating because our ordinance does have a lot of loose, looseness in it and you can put a lot of interpretations on it. But one thing I want to point out is, uh, I went, uh, down 63rd Street yesterday and there's probably never been a more marked change. When you look across to the west, in West Des Moines, as monument signs, there was only one pole sign for the, uh, the shopping center where Sully's Irish Pub is, and you look on the Des Moines side and it's just a proliferation of pole signs. And you look on the Des Moines side, and it's just a proliferation of pole signs. I don't think you're ever going to get desensitized to it, but it would be nice to look up and see the sky instead of a sign for some advertisement for somebody. And so, I ask, you know, we've got a great jewel of a city here. Sometimes it does need to be dusted off, but we ask that you take a look at it because any signs that go in will be grandfathered in. So, not only will I not see any change, but maybe my children and my grandchildren might not see any changes. So, we're serious about this, and we hope you take a good look at it. Thank you very much.
Mayor and council members, Jason Pulliam, 2113 52nd Street, Des Moines, here to speak as the president of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. First, I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to join you and discuss this issue. We think it's an important one for the character of our community, not just now, but well into the future. I want to begin by emphasizing that our efforts to address some of these aesthetic concerns that are related to sign are not anti-business. We're not here to pick a fight with businesses. We're here to say, how can we do a better job of having signage that is more appropriately sized? How do we reduce some of the visual clutter that we have along our commercial corridors? And I think you'd be hard pressed to argue that we don't have a lot of visual clutter along our commercial corridors. We do. And we can either maintain the status quo, or we can start to look for ways to improve it gradually in a fair and a reasonable way, so we're not creating hardships for businesses. And as I said, we do support our businesses. The Merle Hay Neighborhood Association has a track record of standing at this podium and supporting our businesses. So, I don't want anybody to think this is anti-business. But we also believe that there's an uncomfortable truth that we need to confront, and that uncomfortable truth is that pole signs and billboards in large numbers create a significant amount of visual clutter. When you take, as Joanne's pictures pointed out, the tangle with all the transformers and power lines, that visual clutter can easily become blight. And I think there's a fine line when it comes to sign blight, and I'm not sure what side of that line we're on right now in a lot of places. But I think it can fairly be said that we're perhaps a bit too close for comfort, and I think it would be good for a lot of us to come together and see what we can do to address this. I'd like to share some numbers that relate to signage along the commercialized stretch of Merle Hay Road between Hickman and Aurora. These numbers do include the commercial nodes near Merle Hay Road on Hickman. In this roughly one and a half mile stretch of Merle Hay Road, we have more than 50 pole signs. Most of them are 20 to 30 foot tall. Some are shorter, of course, some are taller. We also have about 24 billboard faces in that same stretch. Remember, one pole does not mean one billboard. In most cases, we have two faces on the billboard. Sometimes we have three, sometimes we have four. There are places where large signs work. Merle Hay Mall's signature sign at the northwest corner of Hick, I'm sorry, Merle Hay and Douglas, that works very well. Why does it work very well? Because there's ample setbacks, there's plenty of open space, there's also a lot of landscaping around it, so it looks nice. But if you look in a lot of places in the general vicinity of Merle Hay's sign, you'll see that while a lot of those signs are not as large, they're comparable in height. But they don't have the setbacks, landscaping, design, and other things that make Merle Hay Mall's very large sign work. Joanne mentioned in her remarks that the city council has designated Merle Hay Road as a scenic corridor. I think we have to ask ourselves whether Merle Hay Road, despite the many impressive improvements that we've noted, is it truly scenic? Right now, I think the answer is no. Again, I think this is an uncomfortable truth that we need to confront, not just with Merle Hay Road, but other commercial streets throughout Des Moines. So, what would we like to see happen? Long term, we'd like to see us gradually move toward monument signs in the six-foot tall range. We'd like to see prohibitions on pole signs in most cases, just as the zoning board of adjustment recommended to all of you in August of 2010. I understand the concern about creating legal non-conforming signs. I know that's a legitimate concern, but at the same time, I don't think that concern is sufficient to justify not doing anything. So, most of us would also like to see far fewer billboards in our community. Billboard amortization should be re-explored, re-examined. There's plenty of case law that shows billboard amortization is constitutional. It can be done. And to that end, we believe a sign and billboard moratorium is needed to ensure that we don't end up with even more of the signs that a lot of us at the neighborhood level are hoping to avoid. At your workshop this morning, you talked about revitalizing Southwest 9th Street. I trust that on some level, signs and billboards will be part of that discussion. And if you'll give me about 30 seconds, I'll wrap it up. Okay? Many of you have already played a big part in some of Des Moines' signature turnarounds. We think of Fleer Drive, we think of Gray's Lake, we think of the Western Gateway, East Village. As we've noted, we are also starting to see a lot of very nice improvements on a lot of our commercial corridors. I think to take things to the next level, we really need to see fewer billboards throughout the city. We need to see business signs that are more appropriately sized. I like to think of that as turnaround 2.0 for our commercial corridors. If we have the will, we can do this. And appreciate your time and consideration. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, Frank, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Jason, do you have, when you mentioned the monument signs in six feet, is that standard throughout the suburbs? I'm trying to compare Des Moines to the suburbs. Do you have anything that compares our ordinances versus theirs?
I know based on some staff research that was done back in 2010, 2011, that generally in a lot of our neighboring communities, pole signs are not allowed for new developments. I can't tell you that I've gone and scrutinized West Des Moines' ordinances. Really, what we're looking at is, we want to bear the standard. We want to be the example, not just in the metro area, but also the state.
I'll go back, we have a report on that from 2010. I'll go back and look at that.
I'd like to look at that, too, if you can dig that out for us, Rick.
That's all I have.
Okay. You mentioned a number of things, and part of the pictures and the pitch was about utility lines and transformers. Do you have some ideas for us on that? Because I completely agree.
You're more versed in that issue than I am, so I'll defer to you on that one.
Well, yeah, I think it involves lots and lots of money, which is too bad because I do think in an area like Merle Hay, that has seen its rebound in part because of the Tiff district out there and the attraction that that's been for developers, I think as that Tiff becomes stronger, we have to look at ways to pour money back into the community benefit as well. And if we don't have a plan for that, you know, and I'm talking over many years, because a lot of that revenue is spoken for right now.
Sure.
If we don't have a plan for it, we're just going to keep doing the easiest thing, which is to respond to developers and help get more buildings built. But I think at some point, that has to pay off for the neighborhood.
I think when we reference the power lines, it's not so much that we think they can be buried tomorrow. We're just saying that when you pair the presence of those above-ground power lines, the very tall pole signs, and the even taller billboards, it doesn't create for, it doesn't provide for a very nice presentation, is what we're saying visually and aesthetically.
Absolutely.
It's going to be easier to deal, I think, with pole signs and billboards than power lines, so that's why we're focusing on that.
Mr. Manager, do you want to ask a question?
But, Jason, you make a really compelling argument for your vision about the signage along Merle Hay and other streets in the city. But in my experience, these issues often boil down to a discussion between the city and what it wants to do, and the property owner, and the businesses, and what they want to do. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but I guess what it seems to me, if we're going to launch this effort to try to change something, that it's going to require the cooperation of the property owners and their acquiescence, at least to the ordinance change, and eventually to actually implementing that. So, my question for you is, is that something you think your association would be willing to help us with in terms of outreach to businesses and owners and others along that corridor to help sort of put some support behind making these changes?
We absolutely would help, yes.
All right, we've got a couple more questions down here. Who wants to go first?
I will.
Joanne?
First of all, relating to the billboards and the overhead power lines, and here we're trying to be a sustainable city, and we'd like to plant some shade trees, but line of sight and the wires are limiting that. And there are ways to get the power lines buried, we just have to have the will to do it. But with that being said, I believe, Joanne, you've been chasing this issue for a number of years, and I've been forwarding your concerns on community development. And I know Brian Millard has chased this issue. In fact, thanks to Brian, we don't have the continual changeover on the digital billboards. It's not like originally wanted. But I do support this effort. I think it ought to be a citywide effort, and I think it's time that, for lack of a better term, we need another committee to take a look at this since it's gotten involved. It needs to involve the residents from the very start. I don't want staff to sit back and think, what do they want? I think it's time to sit down with the residents as soon as possible and say, what is it? What do you want to do, and what can we do?
Kelly?
Yes, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. I guess there's a handful of issues, and all of them are relevant to the clutter that you see. I agree that power lines, utility poles are very expensive and also very complicated working with the utility companies to see any of that come to fruition. But I do know that we spend a lot of money on streetscapes throughout the city, and I believe that those are one of the strongest economic drivers that we have. You see that in the East Village, you see that on Ingersoll. Hopefully, you'll see that more and more throughout the city. But I don't know of a better streetscape opportunity than burying power lines. I mean, that cleans up the street, you know, almost immeasurably more than having a streetscape project, quite frankly. And so, I don't know what that looks like moving forward, but it'd be something I would like to explore. I know we're constantly ripping up streets and sewers and sidewalks and different things. I don't know how those comprehensively fit together in the city, but I think that's something we can look at moving forward. In terms of signage, I don't like pole signs. I understand why businesses like pole signs, but I would love to see a transition toward monument signs. I don't think it's unreasonable to look at what some of the suburbs have done in that respect. I think they've done a good job limiting clutter in that respect. In terms of billboards, I've got mixed feelings on billboards in general. I'm not necessarily opposed to the electronic billboards versus some of the outdated papers falling off of older billboards type of scenario, but maybe we could look at some of the lighting requirements that we have, maybe turning down the brightness factor by 10. I mean, you're three blocks away and seeing it shining through your windows, and they don't shut off at night. You know, that's a nuisance to people. Limiting the turnover, as Skip alluded to, I think those are all reasonable, if not independent, components to this that I think we can fit together. I know two years ago, I don't know if it was two years ago, I think we referred something back to planning and zoning to come up with a plan to address the signage, and I don't know that a lot came of that. I would like, I guess my motion tonight would be to refer this back to the city manager. And I don't know what a reasonable timeframe for you is, 30 days, 60 days, somewhere in that neighborhood, to take a look at, at least I'm seeing maybe three specific issues, pole signs versus monument signs, billboards, and then utilities, utility lines. Looking at those separately and comprehensively to see if there are some options in terms of ordinance changes, having a meeting with residents, having a public input meeting to discuss those options. Not necessarily that we're going to change anything, do anything, but I think, I'm not opposed to doing something moving forward if that's something that you think you can do within that timeframe.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I think we can do it, but I'd suggest sort of a step process going forward. It seems to me that what we can do as a first step is to come back to you and lay out some options, some avenues to go. You've talked about a committee, that might be very appropriate. We can't in 30 days or even 60 days come back with detailed ordinance recommendations.
Right.
And I don't think we should try to do that until we have better direction from you. But within that timeframe, I think we can come back and say, look, here are some very general options, here's a process going forward, here's how we can engage the neighborhood and the businesses and everybody that needs to be involved in it, and sort of map out how you might go about doing this. I would say that signs are one of the toughest issues to deal with because there are so many interests, and there are so many different opinions about what's good and what's bad. And what you don't want to do is launch an effort and then end up six months from now saying, well, I don't know what we're doing or where the solution is, or worse yet, doing nothing. So, I think we have to be very careful at the front end to launch this. Something really good can happen from it, but you want to be careful how you sort of map it out. So, what I'd like to suggest, if the council so desires, is to give me some direction to put together sort of a game plan, if you will, work with Jason and his neighbors and others, and then maybe come back to you in a workshop setting and say, look, here's a way you might roll this out, and here's maybe the way a committee might be involved in that. And of course, I can take your direction and ideas between.
Yeah, and I think I'm perfectly okay with that, Rick. My hesitancy with just forming a committee is that committees are oftentimes where ideas go to die. So, I don't want to, in six months, have to have the neighbors come back to this table. So, I agree with your roadmap. I think that's right online with what I'm thinking.
A roadmap with the schedule, too.
And then creates some schedule of, this isn't going to go on indefinitely, or maybe we decide that it should go on indefinitely, and that's the case. But I don't want it to linger out there.
I have one friendly amendment to whatever motion you're going to make. Somebody had mentioned, I don't know if Jason or if it was Bill, but somebody had mentioned these mobile billboards that are driving me nuts. They drive around the East Village.
Downtown Cordow.
Downtown Cord Avenue. That's something I'd like to take a look at, and how do we regulate those and deal with that? Because those are just obnoxious.
It's my understanding, after following up on that, that there is some regulation that is applicable right now.
There is? Okay, I just want to take a look at that, maybe, you know, add that as a friendly amendment that we look at that ordinance.
Okay, I think we have sort of an idea. I've got to applaud everybody for, are you going to speak?
Yeah, just maybe a quick commentary.
Why don't you go ahead?
4007 Southeast 26th Street. They sent me an email ahead of time about this topic, but I didn't get a chance to talk. But now that they've heard what they talked about, clearly with the coalition on the South Side, we've talked about Southeast 14th Street and Army Post with the signage as a big issue, which I can totally agree with, the pole signs and so forth. We've not had as much discussion about the billboard issue there, so I want to kind of separate those. But clearly, we've had a lot of discussion about the streetscape and the pole signs on Southeast 14th, and I'm sure our coalition would be willing to help out if you're going to form a committee and look for some assistance there.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll just make a, Bob, do you want to say something?
Sure. Yes. I know we do have some regulations on pole signs and that. As we went through the CVS up in Highland Park, they had a sign that community development would not approve. They went back to them and worked with them, and they did get a better signage there. I can think back to the predecessor, Harley, too. We had a committee, and it got to a certain point, and I think it just fell apart because it never came to fruition to get everything finalized, I think. Isn't that right, Mike? Mr. Ludwig? Yeah, we had some, you did publish some regulations on, some improvements on the signage, but I'm not sure it ever was finalized.
The only thing I would add to this discussion, again, I want to thank all the neighbors for coming down and bringing this up, because I think keeping it in front of us, as I look at Brian out there, and I look at Bob sitting next to me, and all the years that we spent on plan and zone, working specifically on this issue, and having it go through discussion after discussion after discussion. after discussion after discussion, and as the manager pointed out, never reaching a resolution, because we couldn't get an agreement between the neighbors and the businesses and the billboard owners and everybody else. And it was a point of frustration. I remember we were trying to do zoning and working with West Des Moines, so that on the 63rd Street corridor, the Des Moines side looked like West Des Moines, and we both had similar zoning issues. And we would modify our code so that we had some commonality, especially on these border streets. And certainly Merle Hay and East 14th, all these gateways, Southwest 9th, you know, we need to have that wider, broader look. And I've got to tell you, in the last 15, 17 years that I've been working on this, this is one of the most frustrating issues that I have come across, that we have not reached any consensus or got the city council to agree to move anything forward and on it, and also that we have not redone the whole zoning code. Now, at this point, we probably need to rewrite a 2020 plan to get to 2030 or 40 or something, and make sure the codes somehow reflect the thought of the citizens and the businesses and all of us working together to make this happen, so that Des Moines is that 21st century place that we get all these accolades for, and we don't go home at night, we're in whether or not a billboard sign is going to keep us up all night. So I thank everybody for coming down and registering it, and hopefully we're going to pass the message on to staff. And I hope that Hallie will have some elected officials involved in this group work, so that we can make sure we move this thing forward and try to come up with some resolution, whether it's, as pointed out earlier, amortization or moratoriums or whatever. As we look at the final solution to this, I know that we had Clear Channel in here earlier this evening, we at least have retired one billboard tonight. So I am happy about that, and I think it'll clean up that corner, Brian, out there on Southwest 9th and Army Post. And we've been working on that Southwest 9th corridor to clean up on a lot of stuff, so let's let that be the sort of kickoff for our effort to make multiple efforts, whether it's power poles, whether it's pole signs, whether it's billboards, whether it's all kinds of, as we said, visual clutter that often turns to visual blight. So I appreciate everybody coming down and saying it. I think we've got a motion over here, unless anybody has any further comments on this item, I think we ought to go ahead and vote on it. But let's, Mr. Manager, get everybody involved, let's get this moving forward, and let's make some progress.
Frank, I do remember, we did accomplish something, getting some billboards off of Fleer Drive.
That's right.
Absolutely.
On our way in from the airport to our city.
About three of them.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion?
I think my motion was clear.
And we had a friendly amendment by Brian?
And add the mobile signage as well.
And you might add in that we'll get some council involvement, either ad hoc or otherwise? So let us know when those meetings are going to take place, if you would please.
Seven yes.
All right, item 40, from Randy here, 202 4th Street, apartment 517, to speak regarding violation of his civil life.
Yes, sir.
Is Randy here?
Yes, sir.
Step up, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for your time. If I think so a bit different, there'll be more action. Started about a year ago, Memorial Day, went to get a address change of my driver's license, and wound up with an IOID. I found that out when I got pulled over by the authorities, issued a ticket, I promptly went to the DOT at Park Fair. They deemed me mentally unstable. I hired lawyers to open to the tune of several thousand dollars. I got progress that I deem was that of a court-appointed lawyer. I'm on fixed income, I haven't got that kind of money. After the DOT's suggestion or made mention of my mental stability or faculty control, I promptly high-tailed it over to SSI. Well, I flunked that one. I was too sane for that, so somehow in the system, we've got the sliding mental scale. This is the second time this has happened on the driver's license episode. I've got charges filed on an attorney for ethics. My next dilemma is my money instrument, my savings account. I pay on a simple secured loan for $2,000 out of my pocket, and the money disappears, as recently as last week. I make a mention to the, spate would have another Randy at the credit union, and, oh, it just, it takes a while for these things to, you know, go over through the computer. And I says, well, when I take money out of you guys, it works immediately, you know? The numbers come up. Oh, well, okay, well, there's another hundred, so hundreds put back in there, and I'm pacified for a while. This was while I was ping-ponging with this driver's thing. Okay, this is the third time this has happened. 2,500 bucks at one bank, I won't mention their names, 500 at another bank, and now my credit union. This is the last building, our institution or whatever, you know, the way we do things, government structure, to try to get something down. They've used me for the proverbial Kathy's clown, political ping pong, whatever, you know, one thing to another, the authorities back and forth. And this is really my last try here. This one is in between, where I'm getting food poisoned in between, and family members of mine as recently as last week. I'll put a little heat on Burger King and McDonald's, they need to watch who they're This would be in my lines of communication, my cellphone. I got my first one at 210, and they, the guys are complaining about signs, there must be a lot of wires everybody sells. But anyway, it's about $150, and I'm on the enormous sum of $1,300, some fixed income. These other ones aren't worth mentioning, probably. I've got one here, certainly trouble.
Randy, I don't want to interrupt you from all of your testimony here, but do you have any sense of what you would like us to try to do?
All I'm trying to do, honestly, here is find a competent legal representation, and I have money. And all of these institutions, and I know this isn't the forum, they ain't able to help me. Now, we've got a short list of criminal lawyers in Des Moines, I know them all, after 30 years of big-time politics, and we all agree on, and criminal lawyers, what's our interpretation of, definition of criminal lawyers? I say that facetiously. They don't call back, so here, you know, I've got to do something here. Everything's happened, this is how I do my retirement, very envious, very time into. If anyone knows a competent, honest lawyer, you know, it's not rocket surgery or brain science, and I say that facetiously. But yeah, I could really appreciate it, because, you know, you take a time and money, and something needs to happen there, and that's about all I could say in this building.
Okay, Randy, let me quickly ask our city attorney if he might have any advice. I don't think our staff could particularly help you, but he might have some direction to give to you, it might be somewhat helpful.
Yes, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly to clarify, I can't give you advice, because I'm not your attorney, and I represent these people up here and the city as a whole. What I can suggest, however, would be that you might want to avail yourself of contacting the Iowa State Bar Association or the Polk County Bar Association, and ask either of them for their attorney referral service. They have both pro bono and paid service lawyer referrals, and then you could also check online, potentially.
I went through all of that, and, you know, that's not the crux of the issue, really.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
Looking at your address, Randy, have you had a chance to talk with anybody at Primary Healthcare? Based upon what you've shared with us, I'm just thinking that...
In reference to the hip injury bicycling second phase, because somebody's got...
No, 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 no.
Or what else?
I just thought that, looking at your address, I thought maybe you would have had a chance to visit with Primary Healthcare down where you live, because you live down on Fourth Street, correct?
Probably Healthcare for, in what capacity?
They're a nonprofit, and they're an agency that they work with.
Yeah, I went to, you know, the political analyst on the hillside, I went over to the Department of Human Rights, and she gave me a thing, WWW Call of Lawyers, and I went to ACLU.
Mm-hmm.
It's, you know, seems to be bigger than that. Things here, again, it's not the forum I can discuss in here. It's, you know...
Could I just suggest that we refer it to the, I know it's completely out of our realm here, but just to maybe help him make a contact with the county, with the representative at the county and the Department of Human Services over there, maybe Lynn Farrell's group, Polk County Mental Health Services over there would be another source, and they could actually have a case manager that we...
I need a mental health service. All this comes from three farms and 1,000 acres in North Dakota.
I understand, but just based upon your comments that you've made earlier.
Diamonds and yellow gold, liquid gold, there's a lot of historical confusion, and that would be where it's at, but I need a lawyer, and I'm being denied everything, all, you know, in every facet of my life, and that is, we know, ain't how we do it.
I understand, you know, it's really not in our realm of responsibility here, but what I would be willing to do is to make a referral to the city manager, so that they could assist you in making contact through Polk County. And I think that's where you're going to get the most assistance.
The Department of Human Services, or probably, you know, you go to these lawyers, and you need a Des Moines lawyer. I need a big, you know, probably a high voltage city lawyer from Chicago or something, be my...
Sir, have you...
It's been about 20 years.
Have you made contact with Legal Aid of Iowa?
Yes, I know Bob Riggs well. It's just, it's, you know, this oil find, we haven't got yellow gold, this is not classified as privileged information, so it's back in the treasury, the U.S. Treasury.
Okay.
That's involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody's...
So my motion is to receive and file the information, refer it back to the city manager for assistance in making contact with Polk County Services as appropriate.
Or a competent F.B. Bailey's cousin, or a avenger, she wishes, something in that capacity.
Thank you. I did. Seven yes.
All right, now we have from Cheyenne Holland of 3104 Raccoon Street to speak regarding speeding on her street. Is Cheyenne here? All right, could we have a motion to... For, yes?
No.
Five yes.
All right, that completes that section. We're going to move to the city manager recommendations. 49 is presenting the city manager's recommended development teams for the 7th and Grand Parking Garage redevelopment project, and authorizing the city manager to proceed to the next stage of the process with a selected developers, Council Communication number We had a presentation earlier this morning at our workshop regarding this group, and so, Mr. Manager, should we just move ahead with it, or do you want to make any statement?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the presentation this morning was thorough, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Your action this evening is necessary for us to take this to the next step, and I recommend it.
I'd be happy to move item 49, I think we've got some great opportunities here. Seven yes.
That's your...
Item 50 is on items regarding Norden Hall relocation. A is approving the termination agreement, the urban renewal agreement for sale of land for private redevelopment with 425 East Grand Avenue LLC, disposition parcel number 02-02A at 425 East Grand Avenue, the Metro Center Urban Renewal Project. B is accepting the developer-initiated development proposal from 425 East Grand LLC to develop the disposition parcel number 02-02A at 425 East Grand Avenue in the Metro Center Urban Renewal Area, approving minimum requirements and setting the date of hearing on competitive process for the development and notice of intent to accept proposal for the sale and development for August 26th of 13, Council Communication number 13-389. And C is setting the date of hearing on the issuance of a conditional certificate of appropriateness for the relocation of Norden Hall from 709 East Locust Street, terminating the designation of 709 East Locust Street as a local landmark, and designating 425 East Grand Avenue as a local landmark upon relocation to that address, again, August 26th of 13. Is there anybody here to speak regarding this? We have one speaker.
He took off.
Anybody else? Sure.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Council, Bob Eichelberry, 416 East Fifth, on our blazing saddle, Mongo folks. I am the biggest supporter of this project that you've ever seen. Number one, Jake Christensen has proved himself to me to be a very, very honest man. He just showed me the revised prints. You know, sometimes we want to build and do things, but then sometimes we have to shrink things a little bit. Even with the shrinkage, I think it's going to be a great economic boon for the East Village. And if anybody's affected more than anybody, it's me, because I own most of the property that will abut him. And it's a great thing to save a little bit of history. So in the words of Larry the Cable Guy, "get her done." And I also really want to thank the council, I just noticed today, they're starting to put the parking meters in the western parking lot over on East 4th and Grand. And the new meters, terrific. Thanks, folks, but let's try to get to moving. Dig, dig.
Thank you, Mongo. Sir?
We're just here to answer any questions, you've been here long enough, but really, we're delivering the same number of square feet, just in a different configuration.
Jake, it's only 6:30.
I'm not voting until you quote Larry the Cable Guy.
I'll move 50, A, B, and C. Without quoting Larry the Cable Guy.
Seven yes.
Get her done.
Got her done.
All right, we've got extra items. These are items that were filed after 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday preceding our council meeting and by councilmembers with mayor. Item one on that is a request from councilmember Skip Moore to discuss the Glendale Cemetery Pond. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I, like everybody else in this room, has been by the Glendale Pond this year, and as you go by, you look over and see it's empty, and it's kind of like, oh, Lord, what's going on here? But until recently, I was really getting, I started receiving a lot of calls about it, as we all have, and I spoke with Ben Page, the parks director, last week, and Ben said something to me that... Ben said something to me that kind of threw me, and that was about all the concrete that somebody'd thrown in the pond. And, you know, if you drive by there, you're going downhill, no matter which way you go, so you're flying. So yesterday, I took the opportunity to drive over to the pond and took a look, and what that concrete is, those are old WPA rock, or concrete, broken concrete walls that I know of city employees, we used to sit on the darn things around the pond and eat lunch and take breaks, and there's a lot of huge boulders that have sloughed into the pond that used to, some of them are still there, you could sit on them and they're up above the rock wall. What I would like to do is refer this to, and I agree with staff, I don't think we should be using Water Works water to fill that, let's wait for Mother Nature to do it. But I think that we need to have a comprehensive plan on all of our ponds throughout the city. Those walls need to be put back up, the field behind them needs to be put there, move the boulders back up, maybe the pond needs to be dredged. But I think that after talking to Ben, I know he's got a couple ponds he would like to look at, and I think the pond at Grandview Golf Course, last time I saw kids were wading through there and it was only waist-deep to get golf balls, so I'd like to refer this back to staff to, to do a comprehensive study on all of our ponds throughout our system. Some of them may not need anything. I know McCray Pond was dredged 15, 20 years ago, and Whitmer was dredged, but I think it's a shame that that pond at Glendale's fallen into the state it is, and I'm suspicious it began with the floods of 93, but that's my motion, is refer the city pond system back to staff for a study.
And we don't want anybody waiting around in the Greenwood Park Pond.
Mr. Mayor, council member Skip, I appreciate that thought, and I've been around long enough to see a lot of these kind of projects and the ponds and the dredgings that we've done in the past. It's really the kind of item that really needs to be taken up in the context of our capital improvement program. And what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you and the council, is to take your idea, consider it as part of our capital improvement program, and perhaps come back in that context and make some recommendations to you about how we could undertake such a study as, as part of that. It really needs to be funded, it's bigger than we're going to be able to do in, you know, a short period of time.
Well, I, I agree, and I agree with your suggestion, and that's my motion.
Very good. But are we missing an opportunity, that pond being empty now, to get some of those rocks out of there?
We've, Mr. Mayor, I've talked it over with Ben Page on that very point. We asked ourselves the very same question, if there was something we can be doing, and I think there's, I think there's not much we can do right now.
Too muddy right now.
So...
They get water and it'll be covered.
Okay, so the motion is?
That we refer the pond system to staff for a study and a recommendation through
Six yes?
All right. Item two is a request from Councilmember Moore to discuss potential funding for the recognized neighborhood associations.
I'm, I'm sorry for having this on here today, but I'm, I'm going to go ahead with it, I think it's too important to let it go. You know, these neighborhood associations work their behinds off for the city of Des Moines, and what really bothers me is they end up having to beg for funding for different neighborhood projects, and sometimes they're successful and sometimes they're not. An idea was brought forth to me in the last several days that I think is worth taking a look at, and evidently on the West Coast and some of the southern states and in Europe, what they're doing to fund neighborhood associations is they use some of the tax dollars, like a dollar per thousand or two per thousand, I know Rick's going to have a heart attack over this, but they use that money to fund the neighborhoods, and it allows the neighborhoods to fund things such as their communications, neighborhood nights out, scrubs, it just goes on and on what they could use it for. And what I would like to do is refer this suggestion back to staff and legal, find out what they're doing in some other states, discover if we can do it legally in the state of Iowa, and what it would take to do it here. And I, I think it would really solve a lot of issues with our recognized neighborhood
Question on that, should that be part of the Capitol Crossroads, the discussion with the neighborhood group? It has not come up there, and that seems like that would be the logical place.
We've already closed that discussion, I think we're ready here, we could, we could take it back to them, but I think the appropriate place would be more like Des Moines Neighbors, who represents more than half the neighborhoods in the city and see to it, they're all at the table.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it's, I think I understand the concept of it. I'm not aware of what other cities are doing in terms of funding neighborhood organizations. And obviously, if you make the amounts of funding small, the financial impact is less, but if you talk about significant dollars that go into it, it, it would be really expensive to do that over time, and ultimately, the question for you will be one of affordability. I guess that's obvious, whether or not you can do it, whether or not there's sufficient benefit from doing it compared to other needs issues.
What would the money be used for?
Well, I suppose that's what we would research out, the kind of things, what, what Mr. Moore just said is to use it to pay for communications and other, it sounds like organizational activities for each of the associations. But we, we can, we can look at all of that and report back to you. It is, it is, in my view, it is a tough time to take on additional financial obligations when we're looking at so many other challenges across the board, but if you refer it back to me, we will look at it, and we'll get back to you with our thoughts about it.
I, Skip made reference to Des Moines Neighbors, I think it's important that we include other clusters of neighborhoods that are out there, whether it's the CISNA over on, the Coalition over there, you know, they represent a large group of neighborhood associations, you've got the Resource Office, which also does some work for certain neighborhoods, so it can't be just limited to Des Moines Neighbors. Wherever we have other clusters of neighborhoods, I believe they need to be part of that discussion as well, if we're going to do it.
I think we would ask for all of them. Looks like we have a speaker.
Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur, I do, presently serve as president of Des Moines Neighbors. The, this is new, so I've not got really any chance to form an opinion about it. I, I do think there's a couple things here. Understand that umbrella organizations, such has been mentioned already, are not neighborhood associations, so I would not recommend the money that you were talking about go to umbrella organizations, but simply to neighborhood groups, that's, that's one thing. The other thing is, is that the more that a city involves itself in the funding of neighborhood associations, the more control a city likes to have over those organizations. And so if it's trading money for organizations to do what they should do, or what the city thinks they should do, that might be a concern that would be going there. Skip has identified probably the most important aspect of neighborhood movement is the communication with the citizens of the neighborhoods that they represent. If this money could be earmarked particularly for that type of organization work, I think it's an excellent idea. There are some organizations that fund that communication process through memberships and through selling ads through their newsletters, but other neighborhoods feel that it's a burden on their citizens to charge them even a, a small annual fee for membership. And so if neighborhood associations can be able to tackle some money that's earmarked specifically for communicating with their neighborhood organization, the people they represent, I think is probably not only to benefit to the neighborhood associations, but be, benefit to the city of Des Moines to do that. It could be that, I know that there's a concern, a going concern, that sometimes associations don't actually represent, adequately represent the populace, but then when you get into the dynamics of that, you find the problems of communication. Again, comes back communication. So if we can look at the possibility of the earmark of money, which I think is good, but it's basically geared toward associations communicating with the people that they represent, I think that's a win in every way you look at it. Thank you.
I want to, I want to second what Marty says and not to drag it out, but I completely agree on the communication, and I think that's the weakness in our system. And in light of the fact that communication methods have become so cost-efficient in so many ways, you know, whether it's email or phone blasts or whatever it might be, even though it's that cheap for many, many big organizations, small neighborhood associations can't afford it and get access to it, and I think it's really worth looking at. I served just a year or so on the, what do we call that? The NRO, the Neighborhood Resource Office, where we did give CDBG money to, and that was primarily the purpose, that, that hasn't survived, but I, I'm, I'm all for assisting in the communication.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm okay with this motion tonight, but I also understand that over the last several budget cycles, we've raised taxes, we've laid off different employee groups, public art, we, we had this whole list of things where if we got funding, we'd like X program or Y program to be added back in. So I would like to take, and I'm not saying that this isn't a worthy, a worthy cause, but I think, again, we need to review it in the, in the scope of the budget context when we talk about items such as this that are potentially huge dollar amounts, just based on the number of neighborhoods we have.
I know they've been fortunate on some of the neighborhoods on the east side, that Polk County supervisors have stepped up and, and did some funding for their communication support and mailing and things like that, so I, I don't know whether all the supervisors are doing it, but I know on the east, northeast side, they have been helpful to the neighborhood association.
Some of them are doing it, yeah. So the actual recommendation is referring it back to the city manager's office?
Seven yes?
Item three was not used. Item four is hiring of outside counsel.
I'll, I'll move that.
Any comments?
Seven yes?
Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending this evening. Mongo, you look very patriotic this evening.